Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the council meeting for August the 4th. Would you please stand to pledge allegiance and remain standing for a prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best law with liberty and justice for all.
God, we pray that you will give us the wisdom to know that serving others that we serve you, give us patience, open us to compromise, and the wisdom to lead and solve the issues that are before us. We also pray for our citizens, the one that we are called to serve, that they may realize your grace and peace in their life. We pray for their prosperity and well-being. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Goss. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Doug Goss.
Here.
Jacinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhardt.
Here.
And Jerry Purcell.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting was held on July the 21st, 2025.
Mr. President.
Mr. Engel.
If there are no questions or additions, I move that we approve the minutes from our regular meeting of July 21st.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the minutes of our meeting of July the 21st. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Presentations, petitions, memorials, I don't think we have any. Communications from the mayor, the Mr. Mayor had called me earlier and says that he had a conflict and would not be able to be here this evening. Report from the Board of Public Works and Safety, their minutes are in our packets. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none. Reports from department heads? We have no reports. Any miscellaneous business to come before the council at this time?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if this is miscellaneous business or not, or if it's something for the end of the meeting, but I've read the recent headlines about the resolution of the Blanton and City lawsuit against the prosecutor, and I actually wanted to ask the mayor or the police chief about what is next with that, if, I don't know, if it's resolved and it's over, and if the city or within the department is going to do any type of review of that, or if that's something that would come before the Police Merit Commission. I guess I just want to know what we as a city are doing next.
The chief said he will speak to that for you.
Good evening, everybody. As far as that goes, it's not resolved just yet. We do have a 10-day window to file any other petitions. At this time, we have nothing to add on that. We will be working with the city and the mayor to come up with any statement to put out to everybody.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes. Once this is resolved, and I, as I understand it is not, I would like to see the council put a committee together under IC 36-2-4-21 to investigate the overall of this, if we may.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand what you want us to investigate.
The whole Blanton case. It's under our authority under 36-2-4-21 to investigate, and also we have the right for subpoenas, et cetera. In fact, it is our responsibility to, of oversight.
Okay, can you, you're going to bring that up as a, next, in our next meeting?
We'll wait till we see what the total resolve is, I think, before we would take that kind of an action.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional miscellaneous business at this time? Hearing none. Ordinances on first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Goss.
Make a motion that we read ordinances 35, 2025, and 12, 2025 by title only.
Second.
Have a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 35, 2025, as well as ordinance 12, 2025 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Ordinance number 35, 2025, and ordinance amending ordinance number 54-2022.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you, this ordinance is a rate ordinance. The driving portion of this was the Midwest Industrial Park. I'll kind of give a bit of overview, and then I'll have Corby from OW Crone kind of go over the rates in more details. In 2022, representative from common counsel, Wayne County Commissioners, Wayne County EDC and Mayor Dave Snow, during the process of acquisition of new land in the Midwest Industrial Park, met to discuss the need to upgrade sewer infrastructure to accommodate capacity for further development of the park. During that time, it was known that a coming industry's projected usage would use all the remaining capacity of the sewer park. RSD was tasked to come up with infrastructure upgrade options. RSD met with design engineers to develop options to meet capacity needs. Several options were identified and drafted. Through subsequent meetings with county and city officials, an option believed to be the most economical to meet the expected capacity needs was chosen. The chosen option comes with the need to upgrade, build sewer in three portions that services the park. The approximate cost for design of the method chosen was $2 million. In order to not impede the ability to market the land or to restrict already committed industry's plans, the design work needed to begin immediately with construction to be, follow immediately as well on two of the three needed portions. As a district does not have a rate or a fund set aside for expansion, there were not sufficient funds on hand for the $2 million of design. The district had approximately $200,000 on hand for I&amp;I work in the Midwest Industrial Park area, to which the expansion would address, making those funds usable. The city had approximately $800,000 in the Midwest Industrial Park account that was also relatable and usable. The EDC put forth $1 million, and this allowed RSD to have the cumulative $2 million to start design. Common Council approved this late in 2022 with ordinance 53, 2022. While design was underway, there were several meetings to discuss what the financing mechanism would be to fund the construction. At the end of the discussions, the only viable source of funding to meet the time constraints was determined to be sewer rates. The immediate two portions are estimated at $26 million. The third portion, which we expect to need to begin to design sometime in five to 15 years, and it really depends on what industry is brought in and how quickly, has an estimated $12 million cost. So that brings a total of around $38 million for these three portions of sewer. The district also submitted this project to SRF in 2023 and 2024, trying to procure the lowest possible interest rate. The project did not fall in the fundable range, which we expected, as it is for expansion and not a regulatory mandated project. The best interest option now is through pooled funding through SRF. The district has worked with OW Crone and Associates to determine what rates would need to be in place to both bond the first two portions of the upgrade project and to put enough funds into capital improvement to be able to cash fund in part or whole the third portion or any other expansion that this body needed. We look to close on construction of the first two portions this fall. There have been discussions that TIF funds generated in the park, as industry comes in, could be used to assist payback for these loans, though those numbers are not finalized at this point in time. In addition, the stormwater rate, as we reviewed all the, the stormwater rate, which was last adjusted in 2009, has some proposed changes. As there is overlap between storm and sewer, this helped the sewer rate increase that would be needed for these projects. Before I turn it over to Corby, I also wanted to say that this was advertised to be on public hearing on August 18th meeting.
Good evening.
My name's Corby Thompson with Crone and Associates. I'm a financial advisor there, been doing this for about 10 years now, and I'm working under Jared Hall, if any of you guys have met him, but I've been working with him as well, Pat and Elijah, kind of getting this report together for you guys, and just kind of looking at the rates, in particular for the funding and making sure the rates are in place for the Midwest Industrial Park project. So that kind of triggered the need to kind of go in and take a review of the, of the rates, and in doing so, we also wanted to make sure that any future projects and things that are coming up, that we're proactively planning and making sure we're ahead of those, to make sure that we don't get down the line and have any, you know, large rate increase and cause any rate shock, and those kinds of things. So we could, we took kind of a five-year approach at this through 2029 and kind of reviewing the rates, again, making sure that we can cover everything that we need to do. So you should, or if you, maybe you have not, but we did put together a report, and that's been provided to you guys. I put together a short little presentation that goes over page two of that report. That's kind of the schedule that brings everything together, and in going through that, I think I'll hit a lot of the other key parts of the report, and then if you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer those, so. So again, page two is what we call the pro forma revenue requirement schedule, and what I have up on the screen right now is just the top half section. So, right, this is just what we call your revenue requirements, and this is what it just takes to essentially run the utility. You can kind of break the revenue requirements down into three main parts, one being your cash and operation maintenance expenses, so essentially just what it costs to operate the utility on a day-to-day basis. A second part, you would have your debt service, and that would just be basically all of the debt service requirements on your outstanding bonds, plus any proposed debt service in the future. So we have some estimates for the Midwest Industrial Park project included in these revenue requirements, as well as some future plant upgrades as well, that will be bonded in 2027.
Now, we don't have that page.
No.
Yeah, we don't have page two.
No.
Nope.
Of the report?
No, of the ordinance.
Oh.
Nope.
I'll be able to report.
It's in the report.
It's in the report.
Where's the report? The report. It's online. That doesn't help.
I've got a copy here.
Says S, oh, yeah, no, yeah.
When did they send this to us? This wasn't.
Same number that's up there. You see?
I've already committed to mint my.
Did either one of you need this?
No, you go for it. I can just do that.
I've got the report right here.
Well, I don't need paper copy or.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat. Okay. I've seen it. You got it.
Let me just take a step back here then, now that you guys have the report. So in that report, right, we've got all kinds of schedules, and again, page two of that report is the schedule that brings everything together, and we have that called our pro forma revenue requirement schedule. Also in there is historical financial information, supporting documentation of how we came up with our pro forma amounts, right, that all feed into page two. There's amortization schedules of your outstanding debt, so there is some really good useful information in there if you want to take a look at the details behind schedule two that I'm kind of going through right here. But again, this is kind of the top section of that schedule, and that's where we pull in, again, your operating expenses, debt service requirements, and then a third piece that we call your capital allowance. And that capital allowance is really just an annual amount that needs to be raised by, I'm going to say utility, and when I say that, I'm talking about sewer and stormwater services. That's really what the utility needs to raise in order to pay for, kind of what we call pay-go projects, and/or accumulate dollars on an annual basis for a larger project down the line. But I'll just touch a little bit more on some of these. Again, cash and operation and maintenance expenses. So we looked at 2023, 2024, as well as 2022, to get some kind of historical basis for our pro forma adjustments. We began with the test year of 2024. We look at kind of historical spending. We look at some known things in the market that might affect some of our costs. One big adjustment we had to our operating expenses was for salaries and wages. I believe either last year or two years ago, there was a salary survey or analysis done, so that's kind of the biggest adjustment in coming up with this pro forma operating expense amount presented on the schedule. And then each year, we have some further adjustments for either, you know, cost of living and/or inflationary increases we see. So debt service, again, we've got, I've got that broken into three pieces here. You've got your outstanding debt service, that's pretty simple. Again, that's just the debt service required for the amortization schedules, and then you've got these proposed bonds. And again, that's for the Midwest Industrial Park project, and then there's some additional projects at the plant that need to be done, and we've got those beginning in 2027 at this point. And then I already touched on the capital improvements allowance. So that, there's also a capital improvement plan in your report, where it lists out basically all of the major capital projects that utility needs to get done. So it's a combination of what the cash flows will provide per this schedule, as well as cash that you already have on hand, that will fund all of the projects on that capital improvement plan. If you're more of a visual learner, I've kind of got the various pieces of your revenue requirements broken out. So you can kind of see, we've got about 35% to 40% allocated operations, another 35% to 40% being allocated to your debt service, and then the remaining 20%, 25% for that capital improvements allowance. Next, what we want to do, right, is we want to compare what we need to have versus what we're actually receiving right now. So on this schedule, this is where we take a look at your actual revenues, right? Again, we're taking a test year of 2024. We're making known adjustments to those amounts, right? We had a 5.75% increase already implemented for this year, and then based on some of the results, as you'll see in just a minute, we need some additional 6% increases, and then a 3% for 2029. But essentially, what we're doing is, right, we're just comparing those revenue requirements to what we actually are bringing in and coming up with a revenue shortfall figure. So right here, this is, this is kind of the whole schedule of revenue requirements here, that's presented on page two. We come up with this revenue shortfall, and that's the amount that we need to increase the rates to in order to make sure we're meeting all of our revenue requirements. And what we ultimately have, again, is about a series of three 6% rate increases, plus one 3% rate increase in 2029, in order to make sure that we are getting enough funding for, you know, operations, maintenance, debt service, and all of the capital projects that are out there. The impact to the bill is about a $3 increase per month on an annual basis, right? That's what we're seeing. That's for a 4,000-gallon bill, that's kind of a benchmark that we use. If you're a smaller user, right, it's going to be a little bit less, more like $250 a month is what you're going to see on an annual basis for your monthly increase. We've also presented the stormwater bill, or sorry, the stormwater fee here. Right now, I believe it's around $6. We're proposing to bring that to about $9.40, and again, this is just trying to match up, right, just stormwater revenues, what it's bringing in, to what we need to provide for stormwater projects. So we did some additional analysis, kind of inside looking the sewer rates as well. I know one of the questions I hear a lot is, how do we kind of compare to your neighbors and the surrounding community? And so I've put together a little bit of a comparison chart here. And what you'll see is, right now, you're really just right in the middle of the pack. So you've got these two green lines, right? That's your current, that's your current 4,000-gallon bill, 2026. This would be what your proposed bill would be if you were to adopt this proposed increase. And then I went ahead and threw in 2029. I just marked that yellow, just because I want you guys to realize, you know, there's a lot of these other communities that are going to have increases between now and then. So it wouldn't surprise me if, you know, several of these communities down here, by the time we get to 2029, have a higher bill than you guys would have. So that was a lot of information quick, and I just wanted to make sure I answer any of your guys' questions you might have, or anything, really.
Questions from council at this time?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I just want to make sure I fully understand this. What we're looking at is a rate increase in order to complete the infrastructure in the industrial park?
I, yes. So in order to issue the bonds through SRF, we absolutely have to make sure we have 125% debt service coverage. So that was one of the main reasons we went and we kind of started doing the rate review, and that is the main reason, right, we need to get the rates in place, right, is that we have to have that 125% debt service coverage. But there's additional things that are also being considered in this. As I mentioned, there's a capital improvement plan in that report, right? So that's also being taken into consideration when we're considering these rates. Yes, that's kind of the main driver, right, is this Midwest Industrial Park project, but there are other factors as well that are, that are causing the need for the proposed increase.
Next question for me would be, so this cost is spread out among all of the users?
That's correct.
Okay. This isn't something that we could use the increased taxes on the developed land as part of that payback?
If you're talking about some of the captured TIF dollars that are coming in there, yes, you could certainly use those funds to pay this debt. You could either, SRF, I think usually they have about a 10-year redemption minimum, right? So you wouldn't be able to redeem them probably until about 10 years out, but what you could do is you could always have a true-up, right? Once these industrial customers are online, and we can, we know what the TIF revenue's bringing in, we can then look at the rates, apply that to our revenue requirements, therefore reducing the rates that are, that are needed by the sewer utility. So yes, that is an option to where down the line, you could do that. Now, we can't really count on those yet, because you have to have the revenues, they have to be in place now. If they're not already coming in, the buyers aren't going to really consider those revenues.
But the point would be to have the users pay for this infrastructure development, and I think that's where we need to be on this. The final question would be, I see these stats all the time on comparison to other communities. Do we have the stats in comparison of the demographics of those communities?
Just as far as like population or?
Their income levels, et cetera, et cetera, as opposed to Richmond.
Yeah, I don't have anything together, but, you know, if that's something you'd like to see, we can certainly get something together there, yeah.
I think it's always important to look at that data.
Certain.
When we start, if we're going to compare ourselves to other communities, then we need to look at a full comparison.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Yeah, when is the last time we had a rate increase for sewage?
I was going to ask the rates in 2022, and it's 23, 24, 25.
Okay, 22, and do you remember what that was, what the increase was?
Like a 13, I don't quote, it was like a 13.55, or 13.5 and a half, 5 and a half, or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we do review the rates every couple of years, if not sooner. So as he was saying, this is, the driving factor is the 38 million that was added on from the Midwest Industrial Park, but we would have been doing a review, so there would have been some amount of change.
And you need to.
So there would have been some amount of change regardless, sorry about that, President Berger. But yeah, the $38 million added on to this, and you are correct, Jerry, on the TIF. If we want to start construction in fall, it's not set up now to be used for TIF now. We would have, you would have to delay that project, which is completely the choice of this body. The last estimate I heard was somewhere in the ballpark of 12 million is what the TIF could generate that could be used for this project. So it's approximately a third of the, of the overall project, but that could definitely be factored in at a later date, like you said, true up those pieces. Or it could be delayed at some point in time of the project, and I don't know how long it would have to be before TIF can be counted to be used for that, but that is an option.
Thank you. I think 10 years is a good estimate.
Yeah, once the TIF is in place, then that's when we could go and make, right, we would basically redo our revenue requirement schedule, and in there, we would have included in there a contribution from whatever TIF area or district those revenues are coming from, therefore reducing the overall requirement that needs to be raised by the sewer rates. But we can't do it until those, we're actually already receiving those TIF dollars.
Additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Pat?
No, sir.
This will go to the finance committee, and we'll bring it back on second reading at our next meeting.
Second reading. Ordinance number 12, 2025, a general ordinance amending section 32.99 of the Richmond City Code.
Do we have any questions regarding ordinance number 12, 2025?
Mr. President.
Mr. Engel.
I believe you asked me to put together an ad hoc committee.
Yes, sir.
To look at this, which I didn't do, but I have, and actually, I think Karen Chastain sent me some more information on this, which I felt answered my questions to it. I also talked to our assistant city attorney about this measure, and I, I believe it's ready to go. I think initially, my, my questions were not about this ordinance, but they were about the updated city website, which is, in my opinion, not updated and not, not very usable for our citizens, and that's, that's my main concern, is that if we are sending citizens to our website for information, the information ought to be correct, including minutes and members of various committees and things.
Yes.
So that was my concern. So otherwise, I'm okay with ordinance 12, yeah.
Does any other council member have any comment before we go to public hearing?
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
My main concern with this is putting the responsibility on all these other organizations without any education or pre-development, and the new state law on the reporting. Those two things would concern me to make sure we meet state law on documentation of these meetings. That would be my major concern. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Mr. Engel, in that conversation or investigative research, what is it that you found that the city is planning to do with the website to post this information, to post agendas to the meetings so that our citizens can have more transparency?
My understanding is that there is an effort to update our, the listings for the agendas, the meeting minutes. the agendas, the meeting minutes, and for members of the various commissions and boards, and that is ongoing. And I guess it's, will resolve itself, I hope.
And no timeframe?
I had no timeframe, no. I heard no timeframe. But I did, I was looking at things like the Plan Commission, the members of the Plan Commission is just incomplete, and it's outdated. The same with the Park Board. We have a member who's been on since January, he's not listed on as a Park Board member. I just think that's important, that when residents call me and say, who else is on the Park Board, you know, is this person on? No, they went off last December, so.
So who owns that task currently?
I believe it is one of the mayor's...
Lindsey Darnell?
Lindsey Darnell, mayor's assistant.
She's putting it together, and she'll put it on our Facebook page, on our website.
So, Mr. President, can Lindsey Darnell come and let us know, update us on the status of this, so that it's not unending?
I'll ask her to come to our next meeting.
Thank you.
That's good.
Mr. President?
Mr. Goss?
The document system, Laserfish, who all has access to load documents up onto...
Thank, every department except aviation and law, am I correct, has access to Laserfish? And so like the planning department, whatever boards they have through that office, they could put it on through that license. Does that make sense?
Can we get that verified? Who has access to upload documents to Laserfish?
There seems to be no accountability in documents, documentation.
Yeah, I agree completely that, you know, the website needs updated, but I think the document system, Laserfish, you know, opening that up to a bunch of different people uploading documents to it could create issues with naming conventions and where those documents actually get stored, and could end up making that whole system a big mess. So there's definitely got to be some, at least some training on that before, you know, we throw responsibility onto certain people that may or may not be able to do that.
Have access to it.
I'll ask Lindsey to come and update us on the website, and we'll see, we go from there. Any additional comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think we should hold this.
Yeah.
Since it's on second reading, though, it is public hearing.
Yep.
I think we probably ought to, if anyone in the audience wants to speak to it, I think we should allow them to do it tonight.
I think it...
Is there anyone, is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak to ordinance number 12, 2025, tonight? Okay, we'll just hold it then on second reading.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the board at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
For correction of the record, I didn't know that this other subject was going to come up tonight, and I cited the IC code off the top of my head. I would like to correct that IC code for the record to IC 36-4-6-21.
Repeat that, please.
IC 36-4-6-21.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Move for adjournment.
Aye.
All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Richmond Power and Light meeting on August the 4th, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Doug Goss?
Here.
Lucinda Wright?
Present.
Bill Engel?
Here.
Larry Parker?
Here.
Ann Taylor?
Here.
Jerry Turner?
Here.
Jane Bumbalo?
Here.
Justin Burkhardt?
Here.
And Jerry Purcell?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the July 7th meeting. At this point, you've been able to review. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Parker.
If there are no additions or corrections, I move for approval as received.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the July 7th meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the bills to be approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Parker.
Finance Committee has reviewed the bills and moved for approval of $7,562,869.85. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bills of $7,562,869.85. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, do we have any unfinished business? General Manager's report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The intro screen tonight, I have just a couple of pictures from the Touch a Truck event held on July 17th. At this particular event, Parallax volunteered to set up for RP&amp;L, and gave a little bit of a different perspective, and showing what the fiber optics world has to offer. So we had our fiber splicing truck there, and some of our fiber splicers. So appreciate them volunteering their time to do that. And usually, we have a bucket truck there, and we always appreciate our linemen that volunteer to do that as well. So I think it's important we do those things for the community. First item on the agenda tonight is a request to open bids for a new 2025 or newer Class 7, 71-foot bucket truck for the line department, as previously approved in the budget. Unfortunately, we did not receive any bids. So instead of request to open bids, I'm going to request permission to rebid.
Removed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to rebid this item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. The next part of my agenda tonight, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update and a reminder about safety and security for our employees, and the mechanisms that we have in place for our employees. First of all, as you know, we've had a lot of retirements over the last several years, so our workforce is a little younger than it has been in the past. So the safety training and ongoing education is very crucial for our industry and our new, newer employees. So the first thing I would like to talk about is the fact, we use the American Public Power Association Safety Manual. This is the current edition, the 17th edition. Our safety committee reviewed this page by page before we adopted that, and we just put that into effect this year. So that is our mechanism for reference to different mechanisms on the job site and other safety issues. Another thing that we do, we have a monthly safety training. As a member of EMPA, we participate in their monthly safety program with TVPPA, or Tennessee Valley Public Power Authority. So we were originally using TVPPA on our own, and EMPA went, approached them, and as a group, we get a better rate. So now we pay EMPA, and TVPPA still comes onsite to do our training for us. Actually, I think there was a TV, or an EMPA safety training bill tonight that you guys reviewed and approved. So all of these sessions are held at our facilities. So, so far this year, we've had safety meetings on safety job, safety briefs, work zone safety, disaster preparedness, tree trimming, bloodborne pathogens. In June, we had both bucket truck and poletop rescue. They were done on two different days. In July, it was arc flash, and in August, we have confined space, as well as rigging. And then, as we wrap up the year, we will be doing live line tool care and safety, metering safety, insulate and isolate, and personal protective equipment. So every year, we do have at least once, one a month, if not, there's two months that we have two trainings. In addition to that, I mentioned that we have a lot of new individuals due to retirement. So we bring in an additional trainer. His name is Ron Cook. He is a retired lineman. And we take a deeper dive on some other subjects every year. So this year, we have either completed or will complete the following: transformer safety, lockout-tagout, switching, grounding for personal protection, and backfeed awareness. And speaking of training, we, for a lineman to become a journeyman, to complete their apprenticeship, they have to have 8,000 hours of on-the-job training, and several labs. So their pre-apprentice lab is a climbing lab. Then the other labs are on fundamentals, construction, operations, underground, and troubleshooting. So these labs include bookwork, quizzes, and hands-on work. They also must take a final exam before the Department of Labor will grant them their journeyman card. And once again, we use TVPPA for our lineman training. This picture is a few years old, but it's a picture of two of our linemen when they did become a journeyman, which, again, is a pretty big deal, as you could see from all the requirements I just went over. In the substation, we also have a similar program that includes labs, correspondence learning, and on-the-job training. Aaron Holler has done a great job. He's our line superintendent, and he's working with the Department of Labor for this program to also issue a journeyman card upon completion. So not, he's been working with some other utilities in the state as well to try to get this put together for individuals that complete this training in the substation area. Meter departments, it's not just dealing with meters, it's dealing with power quality, it's dealing with high voltage metering, there's a lot that goes into this. Large power billing. So we send our meter technicians to a number of different schools. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of them that are close, but so we have to send them to the North Carolina Electric Meter School, the Great Lakes Electric Meter School, Tanalis, which is the meters that we use, they do hold classes, sometimes that are a little closer. And then we send someone to the Itron Training, which is our large power metering, which is very important, because 70% of our income comes from our large power customers. So we always want to make sure that everyone is well-versed in those meters and billing. That's a little small, I apologize. And of course, every department has other specialized training as it pertains to their departments, and I won't read all of that, but everyone at the utility does have highly specialized areas that require training. Another thing that we're able to participate in as a member of EMPA are the EMPA monthly workshops. Sometimes these are more technical, sometimes they're more general. Some of the topics that they have offered this year include, one that is always a good one, especially as we have employees moving from a labor position maybe into a supervisory role, which is called buddy to boss. There was one this year on solar's impact on the utility, substation safety, which actually, they held the second part of that class in Richmond, and they used one of, some of our substations as part of their training, underground troubleshooting, and a lot more. So these trainings are open to EMPA member communities and their boards of directors. So I think, at the beginning of each year, I give you a list of the workshops. You probably get an email from EMPA on some of these as well. Pictured here are some of our employees, and Jane, she attended the July workshop with us. In the left picture, second from the left, is Dave Samuels, he's one of our meter technicians. In the right picture, on the far left, is Quentin, he's one of our gentlemen in our General Manager. So in July, we had a really interesting training. It's the first one EMPA's had like this, and it was on de-escalation. They did it in two parts. One part was for more for workers in the field, and the other part was for folks in the office. And Jane, not to put you on the spot, but since you were there, do you want to add anything?
Okay. Yeah, it was, it was absolutely wonderful. I cannot share enough about it, but I brought some notes. The de-escalation, I, I, I just think it's important just to have this out there. De-escalation is the process of reducing the intensity of a conflict, tension, or potentially violent situation through calm, respectful, and strategic communication and actions. And it, they, they went through the step-by-step about being calm, ensuring everyone's safety, lis, listening actively, respect, empathy, and patience. We broke out into these small groups, and they had these different scenarios that we, that we, you know, participated in. And the one thing that I really appreciate is, we were down in our group, and I was with Tony and a couple others. But they came in and they were all prepared to do this role play, and it was awesome because, I'm putting you on the spot now. Well, it was really awesome because I got to see Tony in his natural, you know, boss self, you know, talking to, talking to employees and stuff. But I could visually, visibly, I saw the one in the role play. He, he was taken aback, and it was like, he, he calmed down. I mean, it was, he was in a role, but it, it really, it really impressed me. And, and there's just so much to share about that. But the one thing that, that I really also appreciate is, one of the gentlemen I was able to talk to af, during the program, there was a time when we broke out just for a break, and we had a really good conversation, and we talked about post-trauma, we talked about, you know, different people and, and different things they're going through and identifying. And he encouraged me to purchase, you know, to purchase three books that he had read that he really liked, and I had read through one of them. And it was, it was absolutely wonderful. But the one thing that, that myself, that I learned from this is that there is so much preventive that we can do in everyday life just by how we treat others, every day, who we encounter, showing them respect and kindness. You, you just never know how that will impact someone's life. So that's what I took away.
And I can honestly attest that she was paying attention because she karate chopped me before the meeting started.
I removed a weapon from him.
Yeah, what she had learned. It seemed like a good session.
It was. And speaking of which, that top-left picture, if you look, the little circle there, what we were supposed to do, this gentleman was an irate citizen in the field, and we were supposed to, you know, look at the, the situation and, and assess the situation. And as you see, the little circle on his backside there, he had a gun. And again, not everybody that carries a gun is a bad guy, but they are trying to teach us just to always be aware, especially when you're in the field, you just never know what you're, you're going to encounter, so.
Yep. That's very good.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
But very good workshops, and if you ever do have the opportunity to participate in one, I would, would encourage you to do so. Other training that we do, we have all of our employees go through CPR training every two years. Last year, we did fire extinguisher training, so we'll probably do that again next year. That's one of our employees learning how to use a fire extinguisher. On, other ongoing trainings, last year, we also did active shooter and first aid. The pictures there show that we, we, we have first aid as part of our monthly workshops, but with this one, they focused in on a little deeper dive for us on bleeding control. So that top picture, that we were learning how to pack a wound, and we all had to, to pack a wound. The bottom picture is everyone learning how to apply a tourniquet to themselves if they ever had to do that while in the field. And speaking of which, we have since made sure that we do have bleeding control kits, not only in the service building, our substations, customer service office, but also in every vehicle. We have new first aid centers. Every vehicle in every building has AEDs, and of course, fire extinguishers as well.
Tony, does, does that include Parallax?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, and I, I say RP, Parallax participates in, in all of this.
Okay, thank you.
Another thing that we have is a safety committee, and if there's ever an accident, a sprained ankle, sprained wrist, vehicle damage, we have that employee and their supervisor fill out an accident report. We then have a committee made up of both management and team members, and we go over each and every one of those accident reports to see if there's something we can do different. It could be something as simply, simple as, well, we just got a, a longer line truck. We need to move some vehicles upstairs so we don't hit the cars across from it, you know, that kind of stuff, to actual changing of policies and things like that. So we take, again, take safety very seriously and have a really good safety committee. We also have near-miss meetings, and so these are meetings held by the employees. There are no supervisors' presence, but we give them time where they can actually sit down and talk about maybe something that happened in the field, or they want to talk with their other employees, and then we will get feedback on that. And again, if there's something that needs to be changed, we will, we will work on that. And then this year, we did budget for a new security assessment. We hadn't had one, we had not had one completed since 2019. It analyzed the physical campus, policies and procedures, threat identification, visitors, response plans, and it included interviews with stakeholders, including, of course, our team members, but also the Richmond Police Department, Richmond Fire Department, and the Wayne County Sheriff's Department. So we did just receive that report back, and we're gonna, going to be going through that and working on implementing some of those recommendations. And again, there's a few more of those EMPA workshops for the rest of the year, if you are interested, and I'm sure there's plenty I missed there, but that was kind of a high-level overview, and I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Engel.
Tony, I really appreciate this report. I, I obviously agree that safety is, is so important. But I, I wonder, do we have a lot of accidents? Do we have people falling off trucks, or? I, I realize the job is dangerous, people climbing up poles.
We do. There's, I just had someone today that's getting off a piece of equipment, and they twisted their knee. I mean, it happens. It's not every day by any means, but two or three times a year, we're gonna have that kind of thing happen, so.
If that's all, that's, I'd say that's pretty good with the, all the work that your men do.
Yeah. So, yeah, but that.
Is that a trend, though? I, I mean, I guess I have no sense if last year was better than this year, or two years ago, or five years ago.
Yeah, well, our, our workers' comp rates have been really good. We actually, for a few years, had, they call it your comp. Our comp went down, which meant we got a, a small discount. There were a couple of accidents in the past two or three years that caused our comp to go up. But as long as we have a good year this year, those will fall off, and our comp should go back down. So again, we, we do our very, very best. But sometimes you just, somebody stepping off of an excavator, stepping off of a truck, something happens, or, you know, we, we're, we're driving a lot of miles through alleys. There's a lot of things out there, like dumpsters and people that pull out in front of you and stuff like that. There are a lot of obstacles that we have to dodge every day, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Any other business?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.